Twenty six. The twenty four meeting, I'm definitely planning to order. Seven thirty five P M. Attic notice this meeting has been provided in accordance with section three D of chapter two thirty one of the public vote of nineteen seventy five. How is it sunshine involved? Well, hopefully.
Homer.
Here.
Jose Reyes.
Here.
Judy Nelson, here. Grace and Kelly, here. Ryan Messinger.
Here.
Jose Maderos. Philip Bellin.
Here.
Brad Nelson.
Here.
Ken Shalay.
Here.
Jeff Coletti.
Here.
Steve Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Daniel McDonald.
Here.
And Megan.
Here.
President.
I'd like to be in this group of life. United States of America. Make a good product which stands one nation under God, invisible liberty and sovereignty.
Going into the public for general and general specific question. Some seconds on the. Do that.
I know we're not public comment on thing board. I just want to apologize for that. Last time I was here saying you were reviewing something without section V E F. There was a confusion of what we were looking at and you must think I'm crazy, which I am, but not because this. So I was more confused with this issue than crazy. So I apologize for that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Question both. So second over the better. So Megan Stanley is here tonight. For. Answers to the question that we had earlier in the meeting. All the general comments and concerns that we have as far as moving forward. Let's get it. Our documentation or or public release. So we have a bunch of questions. Area or having it. We have Brian's going to go through. Each of the question for us and then it's gonna give any answer to what that question was. And then if there's any further comments by the way. This is the time to make that up. And say for this, Megan's gonna take it, take what we say, kind of get out of document. And hopefully get it submitted and we can get it probably for other comments. Right?
All right. Thank you. Go ahead. And I think you obviously had a chance to see some of these questions. You're not gonna get blind side of this. So we'll just kind of start the top of the list and work our way down. So the first question that came up during our last meeting was, do we currently possess the farm land preservation plan?
Yeah, the answer to that currently not at least not one that can get you funding from the state. They have released brands to. Like to prepare to do your meeting to air apartment preservation plan. There are requirements that are needed for that. I'm attempting.
Use attention. Let's say subject line. Let's be proud.
Muted now.
Right. Yeah, I think it's something that the town was looking at fire and act advisory need to take that under control. Start looking to develop that plan. Stay sure you're not.
What would the grant funding be for? Like what's what would be the benefits of the grant funding? Would we have a plan to try to figure out ratio of what's left to preserve versus that?
Yeah, and I haven't I haven't looked at what is preserved at the full of the township. If there's certain smaller. Arms that you're looking to preserve. If there's like, you know, building holes here or there, otherwise it's. The county 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 really good farm on preservation plan. If there are not. Specific farms that you're targeting, I, you know. But I would say it's worth looking at.
So we have a pretty high. I shouldn't I'm not going to quote the percentage and probably do a pretty high percentage of reserve final plan. So I should track out the ratio as to instead of the.
Yeah, it does not publicly and let you know their plan donor interest and say the county, you know, has other priorities. It's worth it in that sense, too.
Thank you.
All right. Next question was regarding the one seventy three land use plan element. Can we anticipate receiving a draft of that document?
Yep. So similar to the way the reexam has been done. We've been working on the background elements. So we've been doing all the mapping. We've been looking at doing a full land use analysis to understand what's there. So where we are now, and I think we could probably roll in. Some early comments in our public input session next month, just some input on the on group one seventy three. But the next step is really going to be a full outreach. Session on the plan. So I, you know, I would imagine probably end of summer if this is kind of when we can, I would think that something could be completed by.
Question. Oh. When are we gonna receive some sort of draft? It could say open up gift input, but we don't have anything to. React. When are we gonna give a draft?
No, agreed. Yes, I think. I'm not totally sure yet when that's gonna happen. I think we're gonna have. Discussions to have with the township to exactly what the process is gonna be, is gonna look like if our public input goes. But I think it's probably going to look at, in my head, it's gonna be like an outreach thing where, you know, we go through a PowerPoint that shows, you know, what's there, what's available, really get the input first, then get the recommendations and then send the whole plan to you. Is kind of how I see it in my head, but you know, that's obviously a fair discussion.
So could we get like, you know, how you and I went through and did a plan of timing? Can we do something like that so that we have?
Yeah.
It so that we know what we're working against.
Part of kind of winding down. I think that's where we're.
And as I understand it, the one seventy three corridor is being done through the township committee. So like all the drafting and that will go through them rather than us or no?
It is a planning board document.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's gonna be adopted at the point for.
Okay, but until we have that outreach, I guess we don't really have anything to add to the plan. I mean, other than that.
Yeah, there's not a lot of like actual stuff about what to do there. That's where it's, you know, I think that's why I'm kind of hoping to do the outreach first and get a full comprehensive plan to you to look at all at once instead of piecemeal. Like this kind of like the reexam kind of makes a little bit more sense piecemeal, but something like this is beautiful.
But once we get that outreach and all that. Those comments, will we see a draft to comment?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Because this will be.
Then we'll have further discussion.
I know. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, I guess, too. Is this? Is that element separate apart from the master plan reexamination?
It is. It's. It's a land use element. So it's, you know, it's a separate element of the actual full comprehensive master plan. Whereas this is a reexam of the comprehensive master plan. The land use element becomes technically part of the comprehensive master plan.
So from a timing perspective, does it matter that we're having conversations about the reexamination now? And you're talking about in the summer for land use element, who probably after we deal? The reexamination.
I think it's, I think the reexam is a good setup to it to kind of look at what the objectives and policies and start kind of. Coming up with the background to the one seventy three land use plan element, kind of getting your ducks in a row with the with the reexam and now looking at, you know. And just getting that feedback to and then going back to the land element. I don't. I think they can easily be, I don't think the timing really matters so much. Personally, but.
But is it or isn't part of the master plan, this element?
It is.
It is. Yeah. So we'll approve the master plan and then we'll look at this or we won't approve it until we look at this.
You'll approve the reexam first. And then this is kind of where like the the master plan elements, you know, it gets a little weird. I completely agree. So we're, you have the the original master plan. The comprehensive master plan element and kind of where it gets confusing because most towns don't redo the comprehensive master plan because it's such a big undertaking. So you have the reexam. It does it every ten years. That's what we're doing now. So this becomes kind of. You know, what you look at for next time. But what the land use plan technically becomes part of is the original comprehensive master plan as an appendancy. To it. There's an element to it.
And we shouldn't expect any surprises from this particular start study. Compared to the master. There shouldn't be any difference or something comes up that. May contradict the master.
No, I don't think absolutely not because that's kind of why I thought, you know, it made sense to look at the reexam first, just to kind of. See where you're at as a full town first and see where it makes sense to go. What issues are currently though? Nothing up to act the one seventy three master plan. Like all the land use issues that are currently going to the township.
Is it too early to ask what time of issues and areas you're gonna look into with the ones that we created?
Well, a lot of us are already beginning, like the the reexam starts to set that up. Because we're starting to, you know, there's recommendations to sort of look at different uses that would make sense. In the group one seventy three corridor, it starts to set up possible rezoning, not rezoning, but like maybe. Consolidating certain districts along the one seventy three corridor. It's just starting to kind of set it up and we're gonna take the one seventy three corridor and really dive into what those recommendations say.
Thank you. So the the discussion with the approval. Master plan doesn't dictate like we still have the ability as important thing, whatever decision you want. We're not.
Yeah, it's actually exactly policy that. That. Sorry. It's policy that turned into ordinance is eventually not. Yeah, exactly fair.
So it's fair to say that the land use plan element, the one seventy three element would just be to ultimately be consistent with.
Right. And same with the reexam of the one seventy three land plan is all policy, so.
Any questions? Okay, will the tier A and B ordinances suffice for the climate hazard vulnerability vulnerability assessment? Or do we require additional?
Yeah, that is the climate hazard vulnerability assessment part is a requirement of the M L U L. It's completely from the the. The tier A B ordinances and it's gonna be its own thing. Now, the way the it was decided when it's whenever you do a land use plan element. So the one seventy three land use plan element does trigger the need for a climate hazard called. The PHVA. And the way it was decided with Highlands was that. Because looking at one seventy three as a whole, it's like an economic development standpoint, it's gonna be its, you know, its own animal. They have more funding and they they said that it would be available to go back then after the land plan element is done. To prepare the C H V A and then append that to the land element.
Okay. Is the completion of the new environmental resource inventory prerequisite before finalizing the master plan?
No, it's a something. It just ends up being an appendage master plan kind of later date whenever it's finished.
Concerning the Bethland Township Preserve Lands Map Greenway and Open Space Plan and Recreation Plan Element. Are these documents finalized or do they require updates? Will it be filed as part of the master plan and do they need to update before the master plan can be filed?
Yeah, again, there these are these are separate documents and it's. If the township is looking to update the open space plan or any kind of mapping, this is something that can be done with Highland spending, which I do understand. They do have a decent amount of our local two path, you know, project.
Can we incorporate language in a community energy plant indicate that Bethland Township should continue monitoring its viability? Are there any available grants for this purpose?
So I think they answered this question totally, but I may have misunderstood the question a little bit, but I will say. So yeah, the community energy plan is is a pretty big plan. Only a handful of towns have done it already through B P U's. Funding that became available maybe last year or two years ago. So the township can kind of put whatever they want in the play. There's a set of requirements, but they can, you know, you can also make a dear thing and put what you need in the plan as part of that. I did one recently where it. We included a foundation recommendation to monitor this plan every five years or three years or so, because the technology that'll be. Constantly changing to see, you know, things change. So, you know. B P U is now having implementation grants available for the plan. One could have one adopted. So you can really like if it's in a plan, you can go for a perfect grant for that.
The C P is more of an economic. Incentive plan rather than recognition of like environmental sustainability.
No, it is actually going through. So if you if you get the grant. Sustainable Derby essentially gives you thirty nine initiatives and they have to do with just kind of evaluating what you want to give the town where it put, you know. If and where you want to put solar panels or do a community solar project. Electric charging stations, that type of thing. Different, you can actually add in like different types of master plan elements. One we recently did circulation element, kind of. Get public transportation and bike share type things. So it is. It's very heavily like sustainable journey is not a forefront of this. So it is like in that vein. Yeah.
Are there grants available for resiliency projects and can we request monitoring potential for potential methane leaks?
Yeah, there. This is one I was not totally sure about how to answer, but I do know, I mean, in general, there are, you know, G P has resiliency projects available, are grants for projects available. These are, these tend to be really competitive. So if the township does have an interest in these types of plans, then they they kind of need to be shovel ready. And a lot of towns will. You know, go to RFP already before the branch or he doesn't. So we can, you know, they have folks or you know, engineering folks and everything.
Regarding land use ordinances, while the zoning category seems satisfactory, can we modify the examples provided in each category based on community input?
Yeah, that'll be that'll make part of the presentation to get that clear inside.
In terms of rezoning, can we express the goal of rectifying split zoning throughout the township? How do we obtain owner confirmation for changing from split zone?
Yeah, so this. The reason I, you know, I don't like split zoning is it creates a, it creates a problem for the landowner typically, you know, these zones are typically drawn in G I S like on an arbitrary line. It kind of looks right. And, you know, it's not on a survey and then, you know, it becomes where where does it? Where does it make sense to put the line? And, you know, where a lot of this, where a lot of the the lots are split zone, it's, you know, it's the commercial with the Mount Residential back, which is gonna already have the. At that point, it's land law, you know, all the way in the back. It's highly. It's highly forward state and you're gonna run into if I live the shoes of like in the back area anyway. So I think. I mean, I think there's justification for those splits on lots to get rid of them. Unless, you know, anyone else had other ideas that I can also add into the plan. I did, I don't have to quote there what I added. To kind of beef up that recommendation, but. But yeah, I, so once you get to that rezone, you know, you go to the the court of the tax center to get that confirmation. And once the redoning, those owners are gonna be notified. So if there is any. Problem, you know, they're they have the ability to compensate. So if they have a problem, problem with it.
Are you gonna have some form of criteria to make those decisions, written criteria? For each for all the lots, so we could systematically look at which way to go. Should be this or be that. But is there gonna be a? Any criteria?
Well, the good thing, I don't know. But most of the lots are along one seventy three and it's been part of the one seventy three quarters they do, looking at and identifying every single one. So we've already gone through the process where we're almost there, where we have what those, you know, which lots there are. I know, like recently they have the one residential lot that we had a couple of months ago, came in for the split zoning and I do, I'm sure there's a couple of those in town and just be a matter of. Just kind of identifying those on the zoning map. But we do have, I would say, most of them down already.
Again, how you could decide which should be totally one way or probably the other? What's your criteria to determine that?
It's gonna be what if that been a recommendation, but. It it'll, it'll, you know, be up to the town how you want to do it. But the recommendation we put in there is what makes the most sense based on what else is around it, especially, especially along the street front.
And would be, will we come close to spot gentleman in doing this?
No, because it's gonna be what the others, what, you know, but. The zoning can be consistent because it already kind of the front lot is, you know, part of the lot is, let's all say highway commercial, you know, the other lots are likely going to be highway commercial. And you're just gonna, you know, kind of round up people, clean it up essentially. It's really, you know, more so than anything else.
Can we eliminate warehouses from our ordinances? Or if not, how can we strengthen language to prevent warehouses in our township?
Yeah, so it's already not permitted per. But it's only amended for, I think, the related to thousands, actually. The one thing I did recommend is that wherever. Warehousing comes up, whether it be, I don't remember if it was in the definition, there's a couple of places where warehousing is referenced. And it's just a matter of, you know, cleaning that up and just getting out of there. And then the one thing to kind of beef up this recommendation is to. I looked at the Highlands policy that came out in September in regards to this area. And there are specific areas within the Highlands that they do not recommend. It's just essentially a no go zone for warehouse zoning and. Pretty much the entire township is in a no go zone. So just to kind of concrete that, I put that recommendation in there. So it's very, you know, it's clear that each Highland. Isn't okay with putting their houses in that one.
Is this the same for truck stops?
Um. As far as not wanting them in the township. I know that the truck staff supply to be able to walk in there typically, I'm assuming in the one seventy three corridor if they're allowed. Yeah, I think that's something that, well. I don't know that it's necessarily appropriate to call them out here. I think it'll be more appropriate in the one seventy three corridor of direction, what you have, what uses make sense.
Okay. But you can do it. At that point. We say no truck stops allowed.
Yeah.
We do that.
Yeah, that, yeah, we could, that can make clear of the recommendation if.
Can you clarify the difference between saying that something is not permitted versus versus it's prohibited?
Yeah, I. Yeah, so for that, it's. I would, yeah, it's a tough question to answer, but I mean, you put prohibited in there and that kind of starts to get at different, you know, legal questions when you call something out specifically like that. To say that it's not permitted, to me, it's more of like, it looks like you've looked at these zones and decided it's not appropriate. It just takes a lot of, you know, the legal ambiguity out of it a little bit more.
Wait, which?
Let me say more. Yeah, say just not permitting it. I, you know, I don't think, you know, following it out, it's. I think it opens up the door to say, well, you know, if you're doing that, you're specifically excluding this.
And, okay, and then I guess my next question is, it sounds like we're relying on the guidance of Highlands to. Create the. The lack of permission, I guess, for for this, right? Do we want to entirely rely on an outside body to make that determination for us? Or would it make more sense to have some kind of language within our own Bethland Township master plan? That addresses the appropriateness of something like that.
So we're making it on boards that may be inconsistent.
Right. In other words, for whatever reason, some something happens and the Highlands disappears tomorrow. We would be left high and dry.
Yeah. I don't want to answer it right up, but let me give it some thought and see what kind of language I could put in there that makes sense. But yeah, that's a good point to add that.
It's noted that manufacturing light will require manufacturing heavy under one oh two dash eight. Do you elaborate on this statement and its implications for our township?
And that's what I needed to factor in. I'm sure that's exactly the question.
I think part of that. Somewhere there's a recommendation that used to frame in.
Where you don't.
Your definitions, we don't have a definition for manufacturing light or manufacturing heavy. So we were like confused as to what light means. And then we also have defined heavy. And it's a good part of that.
Then we can start to talk about.
So I don't think it's just. Manufacturing light, just the manufacturing without giving.
Well, that was why it was it was too too split.
Yeah, and I I remember our conversations with the. Wanting to. Feeling it was appropriate to split those out just so that there's no question as to what either of them need, because I know there's probably adversity to want, you know, having heavy manufacturing or what exactly that means. I'm preferring lighter inspection.
Yeah, this on page fifty three. So amend section one two dash eight. So this is one of the recommendations. So man section one two dash eight entitled definitions to include definitions of agribusiness. And tourism oriented business and manufacturing light. And then it suggested that we choose for each one of those. And just for everything's application, manufacturing light. Defined as an establishment engaged in the transformation of finished products or parts into new products. And we're all processing fabricating assembly or disassembly of items, which puts only within an enclosed building.
Yeah. So, okay, what I remember that was there is no. Definition of manufacturing currently in the ordinance and I believe in our, at least it was our, manufacturing is permitted. And this was getting at. Specifying what type of manufacturing is actually permitted and making sure there's really no question to what that type of manufacturing is expected in town.
Yeah, and I think terror is addressing maybe adding, also adding a definition for heavy and then excluding prohibited.
Yeah.
Yes, to be over one oh two dash eight is the definitions ordinance.
Right.
There is no manufacturing in there. Right. I mean, a definition for personal or hidden. On that line, but nothing about manufacturing.
Okay, so if they had a heavy manufacturing.
I think the recommendation on manufacturing light, does that then, what does that do if you're manufacturing heavy? Is somebody gonna come in and say, is that permitted? Is it not? And so how do we define it? And then prohibit or limit?
So I'm wondering if we do include manufacturing light and say specifically, under that definition, say specifically what it does not include, rather than calling out manufacturing heavy? Okay.
Well, then one or two sixteen is the. Research and manufacturing districts, right? So then we could tie that back into like those definitions. Maybe actually.
Yeah, so that's. That's gonna be part of, yeah, what's gonna be what that closely with root one seventy three. I have this. Yeah, because I mean, with our own zone now is. From what I understood is like the, we're gonna be keeping our own zone, but really looking at the bulk standards and the needs to make sure that. They are, you know, things are billable in that area because in our end zone, due use is currently in there that fit that bill of the, of the, yeah.
Okay, so next question regarding R O M. Could you provide further details of impact and implementation in our township?
Yeah, so I think it's that there are uses that are in that zone now that I found it's actually found appropriate. It's more to look at the bulk standards and just to make sure that. One, you want that the use of makes sense and then there are things that you want built there. Um and two, that they can actually be built there based on what the current zoning is and that's. This is really just to kind of give you more staying over what's in there, kind of just really look at the zone, probably why this is thorough, we can lump down what really makes sense there. So that's really to make sure it makes sense of what's permitted and what the uh the standards are.
Uh we seek more information on dark sky implementation, uh its community impact and the availability of grants to make it standard for that whole township.
Yeah, I mean, so dark sky, I kind of feel that thing. I've seen it in a couple of towns up in Hardy County because we're doing it recently, uh East Danville, a couple of towns down there. Um and a lot of times in more rural communities. There, it it's often a neighbor thing where people don't like the lights and I mean, it obviously is a is. Um an ecological thing too, um bright lights can kind of hinder the um the behaviors of different birds. Um insect, that type of thing. So being in a more rural community, I've seen this pop up and that's really. You know, it just looks.
Uh I am curious though about um your your comment that the the enforcement is an issue because I guess when I think about. Issues with lights at night, they tend to be on every night, like it's a gas station, it's got like this giant glow coming from it. So any night you go out there and you could monitor the light and say that this is consistent with our ordinance or not consistent. As opposed to things like no noise ordinances where like they come and go, if you happen to catch it at the right time, you're noise meter, you know, become very complicated. So I guess, back to my question is, like, if we were to develop any ordinance language around dark sky. Like, does it need to be very specific, talking about, I don't know, angles of light and, you know, levels of light and certain?
Yeah, I guess specific with levels of light, um and it does recommend downward facing or shields that keep the light. Focus downward and, you know, of course, it would, it would be more for um new development coming in, of course. Um so which, I mean, might be a good time to do that too, especially if we're looking to, you know, add uses and jump to one seventy-three and make sure that. That doesn't become fully over, you know, overrun, which has had the different lighting.
I mean, how intrusive, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We did use uh such uh what you just recommended in approving the. Uh Bourbon.
Bourbon Street, right.
Bourbon Street, telling them we want lights now. The sign has to be a certain angle, so we could do that in a commercial district, I guess, more than residential.
That was my point, like how intrusive do we wanna be on people's personal property? I get that sometimes it can be annoying, but. I mean, how intrusive do we wanna be as a as a. You know, formally, commercial is one thing, residential, I I wonder.
At 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 the end of the meeting, so I I monitored a little bit of research on this and she has information as far as on it, but. So I want to. I'm printing mine.
Yeah, and if it is, yeah, if it is something you wanted to look at, I know.
Yeah, we can find it for it. I'll show, I'll show that there's a little bit of balance cuz I think one of the uh issues. I haven't talked about more of the national maybe in here, but uh is is personal, the safety of property in our region. And so we saw auto theft, we saw home invasions, naturally in Baton Rouge, a lot of that go off. And so we're putting together on a state level within kind of the seventy-eight car, uh with some of the Somerset Hills mayors and and other like officials. Uh subcommittee to address uh both the theft and then also trying to create programs for the youth that are being pulled into these auto theft crimes. And so lighting is something that I think may be, you know, I didn't say integrated, as people feel more comfortable, a lot of times you tell people to leave lights on. Uh there's seeing apps and that sort of home and home breaking, so there's that kind of balance right now. For my for the residential, I can see on a grudge, I'll regulate a little bit, but.
Under residential, I think it's more um reaching out. Sort of giving information of what type of lightings are out there, what can be done. You know, pass seminars on it and among other things, but just reaching out, have an outreach program. Just you could save electricity, you could do this, you could do that. I think residential that may work. Even if it works a little, it may work.
It sounds like we're kind of having two conversations about dark skies and correct me if I'm wrong, right? There's the conversation that could happen if we decide to pursue ordinance around it, which is the enforcement piece and. Things happening on specific properties and then for the purpose of this exercise, what we're talking about included in the master plan. And this would be more impactful for things like site plan reviews and to give us sort of a tease to approve a site plan and. And, you know, require a can applicant to install that kind of like, right?
Yeah, that's what it is. It's the team to give, you know, I'd be planning more likely to do that. And and there's 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 typically split out into residential, commercial, different things. Um there can be callouts for sporting fields, that type of thing. It's really, it's really stuff like. Lights should be on, you know, timers or um. Motion sensing type thing, not something that should necessarily be on all night long, but rather encourage the motion sensing, that type of thing. And then it sets hours too from the commercial level or on sports field and stuff like that, uh that they must be out or they should be out by ten or eleven or, you know. Within a half hour of the last event, that type of thing, that that's what it includes.
Yeah, and information, provide the information, how to do it.
Yeah.
And a quick look at the. Model anywhere that she referenced um on dark sky. They they break it down into zones, just like regular zoning, so you can have different rules for different zones based on the. The commercial zone would be different, like she said, lights off at ten o'clock, it's at thirty, whatever, but. You're not residential and you're gonna have to put things on timers, motion detectors, that that thing will be completely different to. Set it that way, um so you're not, like you said, it depends on where you're doing your site plan, then you have different rules of site.
Yeah, that's a long, long comprehensive work because the Highlands is willing to fund something like that.
And New England, I think, has a, they have quite a bit. They were like on forefront of that years ago. When we first started going up to, that's where I first heard dark skies in that. And if the whole concept of um things, it's um not just for the aesthetic, but environmentally. Um it it the impacts on that, if you read some of them from these towns and what they investigated, they did the groundwork already. We can get Highlands funding in order to um move it forward, but there's an awful lot of benefits to it too. And with crime and uh whatnot. I don't believe, or correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe they ever did a study on, you know, primary areas with people that left lights on or had this. If you look at now and I'm just going by what you read and what you see on the news. Places, blocks are lit up and there's people running on driveways stealing cars. Matter of fact, it helps them. Get into the car. So I mean, I'm I'm not doubting totally, but we, if we're really serious, which I I I lean, you can tell already. I lean towards us doing something like that. It fits us in more ways than one, it really does. So we should, you know, educate myself even more if we're really, you know, to help our planner too. On what we're um what we're really talking about. Look at other states even, and the East Coast, they're trying to get the East Coast also to do that. Cuz we're well with.
More ways than one.
Think of light and night up and down the East Coast.
Correct.
All around all these neighborhoods that are just totally lit up all night long.
Yeah.
That's for your information. I know the environmental commission will probably recommend that. As as we review the master plan.
Right, uh next question, uh how would a municipal permitting program integrate with farmland preservation? Uh could you provide insights into its potential implementation?
Yeah, so. Under, under the state guidance, um. Townships are allowed to implement permitting if it is perceived that a specific event is going to negatively impact. Or have a high impact on the township. So if you're expecting the need for township garbage collection or. Um officers to guide you for traffic purposes, um. I believe the S A D V does have some guidance as far as what that type of permitting and favor work can look like, but it's. Essentially like renting, you know, renting out a township facility type situation, like a park where you could have, you know, grant a permit for that. That's how that would kind of play in.
And most of the things I've seen on this, uh the towns have unlimited, how often it could be done in one particular site. Like you can't do this every weekend type of.
Right, that's actually at the state too, the state. Um that the the law.
I just wonder if they went into such detail as like the after effects of that with trash and litter and. I mean, it was pretty broad, you know, what they, what um the Murphy administration that pushed through with that. You know, if you read some of it, it's really quite extensive what can be done with farms and with the. Ag um agricultural development, but what, you know, I I wonder how intense it is though with the litter and that. Whether if we, we need something a little bit more for ourselves here or.
Especially if we wanna push agro-tourism.
And and we do.
That, we have to have some for ours.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I'd say it depends on the type of park you have here. I mean, if you have say like. Winters or that type of thing that are doing weddings, that's usually self-contained for the most part, but if a lot of the parks. That's that type of thing where you do see. Uh where you do see a lot of people coming in from all over the place or, you know, that type of thing. That's, I think, where where you want to implement permitting.
All right, uh the board is interested in publicly accessible open space properties. Are there any grant opportunities available for such projects?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, you know, you gotta make sure you read the fine print, but there.
All right, uh please include in section D, the necessity to improve traffic on secondary roads, address issues with bridges like the Iron Bridge. And consider rerouting trucks during incidents on primary roads and major road repairs like Route seventy-eight.
Yeah, that was one where I just needed to kind of understand where that was coming from and what. The recommendation you were looking at, um.
Yeah, I recall, I mean, the issue is the, well, there's a number of issues, but I think rerouted truck traffic through town. Uh certainly when there is an incident on seventy-eight, there's a lot of traffic that goes on Route seventy-three. Some of those trucks wind up working through other secondary roads, uh creating problems and, you know, then there's obviously one-off incidents like what happened to Iron Bridge. Uh where, you know, oversized truck was utilizing that road. So I think it became a question of, is there anything we should try and incorporate? To deal with those issues.
Yeah, I think that it's not really a master planning. Problem also, um it's not, cuz they'll officially road the state road, it's all your duty, so um. I mean, it might be coordination more with.
The problem is we have the state, the county.
Right.
And then township. So there's no state that we have over one seventy-three, unfortunately, that is a state highway. And county roads, we have no state, cuz they're, you know, they're considered secondary use, but what we're considering is we have times where we have enough. Accidents um and challenges, bridge challenges, you know, challenges which are putting traffic onto specific that that can happen first. And so it's one of the issues that I think a lot of residents problems with.
Right.
And it's gotten to be a lot more severe over the last couple of years.
Yeah, I mean, as far as actual language that we could put in there, that would make sense, I. I can, I can put some more thought into it, it's not much to answer now, but um. Yeah, aside from encouraging coordination between, you know, enforcement, law enforcement, that type of thing to. I mean, maybe something like that could fall under a circulation element where. You're kind of evaluating the roads with the intensity, using what makes sense, um.
Some of these roads and Mr. Man, you brought up one of the roads that they thought were um township people even thought was uh like our road, but it's not.
So like kind of, you know, during a time sharing, so, you know, it's a British state road and it's county roads. And so the engineer and I, over the years, multiple times, we've gone to the county, you know, one time about Taroff Down Road. One time about at very West Portal and like you said, they're like DOT regulated, so the highway is primary. One seventy-three is secondary and then those county roads are considered tertiary, or they're called the relief valve roads. So they wouldn't change speed limits or modify them to lower speeds in any certain way because they actually, well, we don't want them to be. They're designed to be those relief valves for those highways, uh for times of accidents, it's just the accidents occurring. Probably a whole lot more than anybody anticipated, the road system is designed. So that's the challenge, the solution to it, we don't, so so safely start trying to control as best they can. But this is, there's no solution that we can control our own uh without having to work with the county and they're not willing to take any steps. Because there's that as part of the DOT system.
So I know. One thing that potentially do um is if and when the county does the circulation element. Um. And I'll just give Somerset as an example to read your, like your circulation element right now. And they've allowed for a lot of public input and they have taken actually a lot of account to what some of the towns are saying. For on the plane for Rocky Hill and they have covered and they're looking to get that diverted. Um so and it was a lot of working with the county and their planner and getting like us involved to like write letters, write letters of support. So I mean, I will say you throw it out with a sting, it might.
With Kristen, that's the best.
Yeah.
By how many towns are a hundred and maybe in that process?
Yeah.
Uh all right, the next question was, we we request appropriate language for section D of the master plan.
And unfortunately, there were the patent rustling and overtalk, so I couldn't fill on the audio and really drill into that, so. What is actually?
It's with redevelopment.
Yeah, the recommended redevelopment plans, uh and then the the comment that's in there just briefly says. The township does not have any designated areas in need of redevelopment or rehabilitation. The township may want to consider designated areas in need of rehabilitation and it means to foster appropriate economic development. Particularly along either the Route one seventy-three with the G C, general commercial, H C, highway commercial, N C, neighborhood commercial. Manufacturing and R O M uh research and office, uh all redevelopment should be sensitive to the rural character of the township.
I mean, this also includes maybe an explanation of violence.
Okay, so what is basically permitted under a redevelopment?
Well, I have a question on that. So if you, if you designate an area in need of redevelopment, doesn't that usually mean blinded?
Not so much, no, not really. No, it could be. There's, there are a few different criteria that it can fall under, um it can be. Where it just doesn't make sense with the lighting pattern anymore, where it's been on light owners turned over so many times, it's tactfully, but it's not really like like.
Sometimes these development plans. They become an issue unto themselves. And they recommend something that's good for that road, but may not be good for the township. So we have to be very careful about that. Uh yes, um one seventy-three needs work. As far as trying to improve the establishment there, et cetera. But do we need other types of high-volume, traffic-volume type of uh businesses here? So there has to be a balance.
And that's the good thing about a redevelopment plan is the township has a lot more say in that site plan than just, you know. Martin Valley coming in, someone coming to you and saying, so what we wanna do, there's typically a give and take and, yeah, the township totally involved in this.
Yes, I, so I went through a redevelopment, redevelopment. So we went through a redevelopment together and it's a lot, we were approached by a developer that, hey, we wanna do something on this piece of property. And it's a negotiation, at the end of the day, the council really is who approves the redevelopment.
the council really is who approves the redevelopment overlay and plan, but there were many, many meetings back and forth negotiating what was going to go on, on that property, and it is a lot different than like we as a board just accepting a set of plans and, you know, going back and forth. So there, there's a lot more input.
Yeah, and, and actually the one that he was talking about is Royal Park, and the township was able to, um, have it put in a really nice, like, welcome to township sign, we were able to ask them to put in, uh, bike racks, that type of thing that would have not normally gone, or especially because they have a very formulaic, it's Royal Park. Like they come, this is their plan, and they actually really made the site nice.
And what I noticed, this, this passage does include some of that qualifying language, I mean, it talks about a means of fostering appropriate economic activity, uh, and then the last line about all new development should be sensitive to the rural character of the township. So there is a little bit of structure, I think.
I, I shared in, um, yeah, I know, probably because I don't speak for him, but years ago, Mr. Manas, when he was on the committee with me, we went to the league municipalities together and sat through, uh, what, what does it look like to designate an area in need of redevelopment? And then, uh, you can probably share with yourself the next meeting and talk about open space, but I, I, I think, uh, I think Mr. Manas is probably more conservative than I am on the economic development side, and was appeared comfortable with what an area in need of redevelopment looked like, because it's not you craft it, it's not set to like, we want to build, you know, multi-high-rise and warehouses. It was more meant to address the inconsistency on the highway. And so you can limit it to that, just how do we better create, like you said, they could use some tweaks, any kind of crap to that, but it makes it easier to do that, incentivized, I would say easier, I'd say incentivized is probably, uh, we did planners, incentivized is probably a better way to make it easier, uh, but it's not, we kind of set what that looks like, it's not and that's why that's in here, the language in the master plan itself, this is to be consistent with the rural character of Bethlehem, but to create, to correct some of that inconsistency that can be more beneficial to the town.
Because you mentioned something, sometimes if you don't have a plan, a developer will come in and insist on proposing this. It may fall, not what you want, but you don't have a plan. So then the negotiation start, and you start behind the eight ball at that point, if you don't have a plan.
That's actually, this would be beneficial. I said, so.
A little bit more detailed, but yeah.
Well, yeah, I don't know, yeah, that has to be, but it, it is a concept that we love, because it's um, John and I are on the committee together, it's been probably ten years, so, and this is a topic that's been kind of kicked around for a long time. Uh, in Bethlehem, anyway, uh, but it has to be crafted appropriately. I think at the time, back ten years ago, we didn't have the understanding to do anything with it, like John and I laughed, we're like, wow, that could be a great tool. And, but we didn't know what to do with it, we weren't in a position at the time to have these discussions, we weren't in a master plan review. So, uh, it may be something to, to look at as we go through. Now.
All right, last question. Um, Bethlehem Township is interested in EV charging stations in public places, including heritage park. Could you provide language for this in section half of the master plan?
Yes, I do.
We wanted to go out with a sauceline.
Thank you, Ryan. Yeah, for those questions. Any other, or if there are any questions, I'm concerned if they'd like to address.
You've answered quite a few.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna have to, when I open it up to the public, if there are any public comments right now, if I make a question.
Well, she tells them to the public.
Second. Any comments in the public or questions? Is there?
Is this public comments just in general or just something on the?
This is about what we're discussing, if there's any question.
But you're open to public for just general public comments, I think?
Yeah.
Okay.
Andrew Latvy, excuse me. Three Faroe Lane, um, just a comment on the light matter. Personally, I had my vehicle stolen, as you know, Mr. Man, out of the community, you know, where we have nice things. The problem isn't the light, the problem is that there's no consequence for the crime. So we may fix the light problem, but at the end of the day, when they go through the criminal justice system, they get no consequence whatsoever, so they continue to do it. So it may be useful time for the board to look at the lighting issues, but at the same time, it might be useful for the committee to look at legislation, let, excuse me, legislation issues so that it doesn't happen to anybody else, because at the end of the day, our most valuable assets other than, uh, physical assets, our houses, our vehicles, and our personal property. So lighting is a good issue to focus on, but at the same time, they don't care if they're not going to get prosecuted to the full extent of the law, so that's just something that I wanted to make sure was commented on since it was brought up in a little bit of detail, so.
Well, thank you. Glad you definitely had a purview of, of what we are, unfortunately, the legal system is not within our, the thinking manager committee has too much to say over that.
I, I'll share it one next, next Thursday, but sure, yeah, just something to plan more, but, but briefly, we, you know, we're setting up, actually I had a mayor from, uh, Burnet Township reach out to me, uh, as president of commoners. Uh, and we're looking to put, or we are actually putting together, and she'll be the chairperson of subcommittee, uh, to address ballot reform as well as, like I shared, community support today. Uh, I think in New Jersey, it's, it's a difficult conversation, we talk about, like you said, we have nice things, so you have a community asking to protect our nice things. But then you have, uh, the urban community where youth are, you know, essentially forced to give them the option to steal cars because there's nothing else for them. So we're actually looking to put together a task force statewide, so we need to ask both things, and we asked about ballot reform, so that uh, there are consequences, but we also recognize that there's a reason, these youth are jumping into the auto theft rings, and can we work with the legislators, like the officials in those areas as well? And in cooperation, we'll do a full wraparound, maybe provide some other opportunities to prevent people from, you know, jumping in on the crime side. So it's not, you know, suburban versus urban, we're willing to work together to solve this problem.
Because with the master plan, we're going to be bringing in more businesses, more traffic, more influx of people, so as that happens, it's going to magnify just the overall population, not necessarily residents, but of people coming into the town. So overall, that's something I'm glad that you're looking at, and I know that it's not the planning board's place necessarily look at the legislation, leg- legislation point. But lights used to deter people because there was a consequence. Now lighting, I had plenty of lighting at my house, it wasn't the lighting, it was the fact that I had a nice truck, so. Thank you, man.
Suzanne?
Suzanne, well, for twenty four twelve, so, so I know I have some comments, I gave them to the environmental commission, and, but based on what was Megan's answers tonight, should I raise them or can Jose raise them, or should we wait till public comment?
You're there, there, you can, you can make your comments.
Oh, okay. Uh, first thing for the, um, the split zone, uh, I'm not in agreement with the split zone, highway commercial, mountain residential, I think that we need a buffer. And I think that, I understand it's hard to decide, determine where that one zone is and the other ends, but I think the perfect example, the highway commercial, mountain residential, does create a buffer between that highway commercial and the residential properties behind it. The, um, the split zones where it's like the R one, R five, that definitely seems like a no-brainer to try to combine, because like the property owner that came in and how to get whatever the variance is, because they were on two separate lots, makes more sense to me to combine it, but, um, that's that, and, um, um, the, um, warehouses not permitted versus prohibited. I personally like the word prohibited, and I think just relying on the Highlands with the Highland states is a little bit punting and problematic. Um, I understand they give guidelines and they did write a paper for it, but in my mind, there's nothing to, that, I think would be beneficial to the town if we don't want warehouses, which I don't think I do, to explicitly state that. And then the concept of redevelopment, I understand redevelopment kind of sounds good, but if I'm remembering correctly, that's what opened up, I think it was Franklin Township to the warehouse because it was redevelopment. And I believe, I could be wrong on this, that it also allows for some waivers with the Highlands preservation areas, which all of one seventy three is in. So again, for opening us up to potential warehouses. And I liked Jose's comment about, you know, explicitly stating about truck stops, because I think they can become problematic as well. And there was one last thought, but I forgot, oh. So I know we don't have it yet, but it was in the, uh, New York Times, they were talking about the bit mine operations, and they're not that, it's that large, but they typically target rural areas. And they're extremely bad environmentally, you can't go outside because of the noise, they suck up resources, so I don't know if we want to think about that, kind of trying to think about the future and what might be coming down the pike that way, and I think that was it, based on the questions, and I think the questions that were asked were very good, so that was great, thank you.
They had a question in the public, anybody on them? Motion opposed, motion close, problem?
Second.
Uh, the chair.
I got it.
We didn't have a direct question, but, um, we, we discussed it for, for some like the, uh, the neighborhood commercial zone, and which is the West Portal section, um, all the older houses in, in Fuss one seventy three, um, the original, we just don't know that is part, parcel over there, um, the, the high school is over there. Um, there's, there's, there's chatter about the school possibly closing, um, so that puts a piece of, a decent piece of, of property down there, which is more of that property, but I didn't, I didn't keep it or put it back to the town, but I was concerned about what could be done as far as that section, we have, uh, Judge Mountain Park, which is in Hunter County, which is, um, all mountainous, um, so we had a discussion about what was good or, um, good to do in that section, maybe, um, what, what we just talked about as far as, um, redevelopment, would be possible to benefit that area, which is historic, um, better practice, the benefit, um, stuff like that.
Well, maybe it ends up, in fact, it's, I wanted to bring that up, so we can kind of focus on that in one seventy three.
You do have, that, that's, that is a historical effect.
So it is something too, where we could potentially, um, in the section there, we do talk about where it is appropriate for redevelopment, um, but I mean, in general, is that kind of an area that is, you know, you look favorable for redevelopment, because in that case, we can also say, um, and we can say it should be dependent to the, to the moral character, we can also add something to, you know, the historic character of certain areas. Kind of that language into the, the redevelopment section.
So just to clarify, is there something that we wanted to add to the definition of neighborhood commercial or?
Again, what, so what, what we were, so originally neighborhood commercial, I'm remembering perfectly, we had definitions that had changed. And we were talking about, um, what was allowed, so from, from basically sun shops, bale shops, to walks, to offices, to, um,
So the, the proposed definition is here, is for neighborhood commercial is uses such as small grocery store in general, or specialty stores, which furnish convenience goods and services to meet the daily needs of residents.
Right, and part of that discussion, this might be the point, was that none of those uses could literally be put into that neighborhood right now, right, I mean, you couldn't park them, you couldn't park anything, you can't park there, you can't.
But in a lot of that, it's, I mean, I think that's the.
The hotel. Put back to the hotel, but otherwise, I think I always took me where commercial would be, like, you know, small doctor's office, an attorney's office, you know, the accountant or something that might have two cars.
I agree with Tom that, and I certainly, I thought that was a lot of now.
So I think that's what is a lot of now, right, and then this got changed. Um, so I, I think you kind of have to add these in, into that definition by, by all this is here.
Well, I think, you know, so, so take the hotel for example, it's a private residence now. Part of it is the issue, but then if they submit to decide, like, I, I'd be a little cautious about taking something away, because maybe there could be a general or specialty store there, but then it's up to that person to figure out what the parking looks like when they come to us for a site plan, whereas if you take it out, nobody's ever going to look at that in any other way. So it gives an option in what is a traditionally commercial zone, even less largely residential at this point.
What, the school may or may not be closing, that's certainly, that area certainly has enough parking in the back, the side, in front, and it's walk distance to what we're talking about.
Absolutely, I mean, there's.
Well, you have to know, because there's no sidewalks, right, I mean.
Well, that's what I said, that's why I said, it wouldn't take something away, because if you look at Asbury and Warren County and Franklin Township, um, well, you know, kind of ushered by the Mustang Economic Water Show Association, they received grants, and then doing a neighborhood redevelopment, if you will, that includes sidewalks and walk paths and walk abilities, and a lot of it's funded through grants. So it's things that didn't exist, and like parking would be shared actually with the church. And then create walkability, because during the week, if they have a small office, they don't have parking, but the church is being muted during the week, so there's no agreement there, but then put in a crosswalk and a sidewalk, it's not there yet now, but this, this is like the plan, that's in the works. So it still keeps the character of that downtown, uh, but, but adds some, um, greater abilities based on the, the walkability and connection, connections, uh, through this neighborhood designation, and it's, our area is smaller than that, but it's very similar.
So for this definition, do we want to, I mean, keep all the stuff with also like a little bit of the things that like the smaller things like the, the doctor's office, the, like that type of.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess we, we, yeah, I mean, and the park, um, the township owns, or my own, some of the property that's on the one side, so, and, and jumped in, and the county has a substantial chunk of that, so. You know, if a, a, a plan is hatched, I think it's, it's doable to have sidewalks over there. You know, you do have this thing in, which has a lot of real estate to work in back, you know, I think a parking agreement could be made. Yeah, it's wonderful.
But we're not talking large scale, we're talking. But we're not talking large scale, we're talking.
We're talking small town, yeah, small town.
But yeah.
Neighborhood.
A neighborhood thing and, you know, it could, you know, I as, you know, my feeling is is we have a park there and. It'd be great to actually have trails that go up into the park and then start start connecting, you know, with Tower Hill and. Everything else, which doesn't really exist, but you know, people could come down for the day hiking and it's entirely possible that. And maybe a walking shop works or something like that.
And we talked in the past too about what healthcare offices, not necessarily meaning doctors. With MRIs, things like that, rather than saying, what do you think, not rather than saying what doctor's office. You can have small, look at Hunterdon Healthcare, St. Luke's, they're always looking. For patches and to keep it a nice little thing, so you're not going into a massive building, but you're going through your CAT scan, you're going for your MRI. You're going for your PET scan to someplace that's a little, rather than the doctor's office is a little more simple and more welcoming. Um, healthcare offices. Yes.
So would that also lead to say senior daycare or something?
Healthcare office, if you wanna consider it healthcare offices, if you talk healthcare facilities, that opens up a whole another thing, a whole another venue of things. Day centers, yes, people come and then they go. But you've got a stream running right through that neighborhood, so whatever you develop, you put in there, you gotta be mindful of of the buffoon and everything, yeah. Right? Some of the little little satellite things, the doctor's offices and um healthcare offices strewn throughout the towns out here. Hunterton bought up a lot of them, that used to be private offices and things. We can make that, you know.
Yeah, I don't think changing the footprint and that other commercials would be impacted, it's just the the use and then the parking that we created.
Right, I mean, they can design it or help you.
So would we have a keep like professional offices?
Professional or if you want a safe professional, i.e. healthcare offices, things like that.
They'll change.
That's why I keep their coffee before they go in. As long as they're not MPO, they can have anything else they need to say. Before their test, right, and even the day center, people come and go, nobody's living there. They have closed holidays, adult day centers.
Close at night?
Yeah.
And with that conversation, you have to get something to finalize.
So um the next meeting would be March eleventh, um that would be, is that maybe doable for us to have? That at least, but the meeting is on Monday, that we would have it by the prior Wednesday, I'm not looking at a calendar. Yes, yeah, yeah. So that that can then be sent out to the board and then it can be presented to the board on the eleventh and it could be voted on. To go and and to put it out publicly, so that that by that Thursday would be the goal to have it on the website. Does that sound like a a reasonable timeline?
How long do we need to put it? On the website, keep it out there for public to.
That was my next question, um so um. If we put it up, let's say, I believe that's the fourteenth, if it gets up on the website by the fourteenth. When do we want to have a public comment? Do we think that by um a week is enough or do we wanna push it for the next? So that would be the first meeting of April.
I would go for the first week of April. Give people an opportunity. Yeah, we put it up on the fourteenth, the next meeting is the twenty-fifth, so it's only a lot of days. More than another two weeks. So if you put it fourteen, how many gives people um? Or the first three meetings.
It's me, the first meeting for us is the meeting of April.
There we go, there you go. Which, by the way, our meeting dates are in there in a fine packet here on the left-hand side.
Okay, so just so that everybody knows that if we, if if that's the decision, because it has to be publicized. It actually has to be advertised and what have you in advance to give the public the most notice. So, yeah. April would be the public comment, so maybe you'll be able to beat them. For that, Kenny, do you want anyone else, I mean, like Kara or Tom here?
Yeah, a lot of error.
And then March sixth for the job, the next one then, right?
Yes. Are you gonna answer anyway, you could get that to me on the fifth, I apologize, I'm leaving for Nebraska. Thank you. I just don't wanna be the reason it's held up for that time.
Right, any votes in the public for general questions, comments?
So, second, oh, isn't there?
He's in Wilder for twenty-four, Charles Tundra, that I think it was the. January twenty-second meeting, you adopted the, you adopted your bylaws and you put in limits on time. I just, I don't have the copy here, is there any way that I could, the public can get a copy of? Uh, the bylaws which had options for the time limits?
I, I, I just got the lawyer, I I made the changes, I had the lawyer check it literally an hour before we came to meeting, so. I'll get that out, I'll give it to Lou, we'll get it up on the website, does that seem appropriate, guys?
And and just a question, do you remember if there's a time limit, if when there's a hearing, an actual hearing? The guidelines of the hearing.
It's the amount of people, so end up being um. Want to, yes.
Any public comment on a certain number of people is the way that it was raised.
I I sort of remembered from that meeting that it was based, like, public comment here now is different than a hearing.
No, no.
No, okay, okay, then I remembered wrong, but I'll read the copy when it's on, thank you.
And there's a time, I mean, I just think. There, the best and to share equitable participation, when attending public ranges from fifteen to twenty-nine individuals is sufficient applicants. Each person is granted up to five minutes for comment, should attendance exceed thirty, the limit reduces to three minutes for an individual aligning with the board's meeting duration outline. Sectionally, it's a total of three hours of violation. So plus the thirty up to five minutes, over thirty people, it's capped at three minutes. And again, you understand our meetings, you know, are at thirty, so it's, we only have so much time, there wasn't to be done anyways, but. You know, if there's fifty people, we're gonna do the math, we need enough time. Any other questions or comments?
Andrew Laffey, three power link, just a quick question about the repaving in Woods and Fox Farm. Any idea when that's gonna start, because they started marking out the road uh last Thursday? So, just so we have a way to prepare to understand when that's gonna happen.
Well, what I noticed, uh, if you want to read that question, the township committee meeting. I don't, I also don't know, uh, I think, uh, I think the second bid still has to go out.
Okay.
It's two, two years of the RZ grants for combining on project.
Understood.
So I don't have dates, Mr. Decker, my.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll, like I said, we'll put it up on the website, thank you for that. Also, just for general public, we do chip seal, we also put that up on website, so people know where roads are though.
Okay, thank you.
And then for February twelve.
I make a motion to accept the minutes, I don't know, but yes, I do, the date of this statement, February twelve twenty-five four.
And vote in favor? Against?
Who was the second, sorry?
Uh, the only one added is, you know, portable housing, because our accomplished hurdle with our master plan. Uh, so, uh, I don't have a shed last meeting, I'm forgetting all the timing of it. Uh, but the uh state assembly bill did pass for affordable housing. It's uh in Senate committee, or it was on Thursday, I submitted it over to the Senate relatively quickly. I spent Thursday um on a advisory committee with New Jersey Future, which is a nonprofit organization. Uh, that advocates for sustainable affordable housing. Uh, so it's it's interesting, because out of thirty people, there are only four municipalities, the rest were nonprofits, spare share. Director was there building associations, uh, so I was bringing up as an update, that it was something we had to deal with. Right now, it looks like, uh, you know, our initial number uh would be a hundred and seventy-two portable units for Bethlehem Township, based on the. Next round, uh, as we did last round, we'll be going, we'll see what we can negotiate, what the process is for that. There's some different mechanisms uh this year, or this round, uh, round four starts in twenty twenty-five. The only thing I'd share from a planning board standpoint, from the New Jersey Future uh conference, or it's not a council advisory, they'll be doing a conference in the spring. Uh, something that Kara had shared, I don't know what, I think it went to the whole board about the accessory buildings. You know, that was brought up at 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 this uh advisory committee meeting as well, and it seems like. Um, there's going to be a trend in New Jersey going forward to try to pull um some land use. Away from municipalities up into the state level, and so I think it's something that we need to be aware of as we go, so this accessory use is a perfect example. They're taking, they're looking to take it away from purview of municipalities, so they need to put accessory uses. Uh, and and I think it was a state approval and not a local, and so I'm just kind of, as a township committee, we'll be aware of it, but just as a planning board. Uh, I I'm gonna guess that's kind of a trend we're gonna see in New Jersey over the next couple of years, and so we should be aware of that. How we design our ordinances and try to protect Bethlehem and the best you can.
All, they pretty much do that. They give us money and do what they want.
Yes.
They're under control. Try to do it again.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so last week I I attended the hundred in county um. Department of, I guess, uh Tourism, and they were um lively committee, lively discussion around. Increasing and supporting the townships regarding tourism. Um, some economic um development conversations were had as well regarding, not so much a town like ours, but. Something like Clinton that has a lot of small businesses, how to best support the small businesses, the SBA was there. Um, representatives from New Jersey Transit, where they are regarding um train service, which still probably won't. Be out here anytime soon, um, but then I expressed, I had shared a couple of our ordinances per your instructions, Paul. Um, regarding accessory use, our home-based businesses and and what that may turn out to look like, and they were in full support of. Anything that we wanna do in this town, as well as the fact that they know that one seventy-three is being looked at, they're willing to support us. Whatever, however we might need them to. So, it was a good discussion, it was pretty high level, but very good.
Subcommittees, I don't think there's been any meetings since. Any board members are gonna?
So, um, just first of all, um, as you guys know, I sent out the the article about the accessory building and how they're doing different things, just. In case somebody hasn't read them, I did send those out for everybody, I had a conversation with um. Herbert, um, August at Highlands Council today. And um, you know, the big part for me was to figure out the billing and to understand how. We have the one grant, but it's two different projects and how we can best build that, so. That's now gonna be resolved by the end of the week, I'm hoping to be able to process all of that and get that taken care of, because that backlog has been very bothersome to me. Um, I did talk to them about the ERI, um, and that there isn't funding for that, that they fund the first ERI. And then they have a robust um section of their website where you can basically generate it off their website, any updates and what have you. I did print out how to do that, I have no familiarity with that, but I do have it available, so I'll go ahead and give it to you if you need it. Um, he did talk to me about the community energy plan and he would entertain, or Highlands would entertain. A grant request um with regard to the community energy plan. Um, it would be a study, analyze and determine best placement and viability for like charging stations and such. But it would need to be submitted as an alternative energy and transportation element or under the circulation element. Submitted to, you know, submit the the scope of work and they'll have a look at that for us. If we wanna do something more along the lines of solar or home backup batteries. Highland Council is currently working on guidelines for resilience and climate change effects, so there's not granting grants for that as much as they are expecting to have. Guidance is out there, with regard to dark sky, um, Highlands would be very interested in funding a planning study. For light pollution as it's consistent with the regional master plan. Um, regarding the warehouse ordinance or what we wanna do with regard to our ordinances that affect a warehouse um implications. Highland Council has funding available to help generate and give us um assistance with wording. For ordinance related to proper placement of warehouse in the Highlands Preserve um municipalities. Hope Township um recently requested and was granted the funds for the purpose to um deter. Um, having warehouses in the preserve and the Highlands areas. Um, the other um initiative that the chairman has asked me to undertake is getting educational opportunities for the board. Um, one of those he asked is to bring in the Highlands so that they can talk to us, and I discussed that with him. And he said, absolutely, let us know what you want, he envisions it as. Having them come to talk about our partnership, how much um has been accomplished, what are the successes for Bethlehem Township? What direction can we go to, um, and how can they be uh an advocate and a partner for us? Um, they said that if there's any nitty gritty kind of planning that needs to be done, obviously, you know, have it as a public meeting, but also. Um, if we need any of their specific assistance, they're available also for executive session, if that becomes relevant or necessary. So that was that conversation, which was very productive and. It answered a lot of my questions, so it made me very happy, and as a reminder, um, on the eleventh, I will not be here. So when the master plan is presented, I'll I'll ask Kara to do that. Um, so that she can get the vote and what have you, so that we don't have a hiccup with that, and for example, we would take memo notes.
That would be greatly appreciated.
And for example, if we take memo notes, that would greatly appreciate it. Sure. And we'll just have to figure out about turn home and setting it all up. So, that's a look at.
Thank you. Okay, so. To the hottest conversation, I'm looking at doing quarterly. Learning experiences, right, Kara's been put together on on our whole meeting. Some learning or going back over some of the things that that we are rusty on. So basically, she's gonna be going over C and D variances. And we're starting that, it'll be during, or it'll be at the end of the meeting. Probably gonna be able to sit there and listen to it if they so choose. Some of it might be boring, but it gives, it might give them an idea of what we have to actually look at when we're granting. Or not approved that. We try to do that quarterly, not over, over.